On the Monday, February 24th, 2020, reports my city council, which happens to be a work session to order. And Madam Clark, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas-Burt.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. This is a, well, at least the first part of this meeting is a joint meeting with city council, meaning with the school board. And we welcome the school board colleagues here. And the county parent, you want to join your meeting.
Yes. Madam Clark, would you call them?
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Lamb.
Present.
Mr. Pham.
Present.
Before we start the meeting, I'm sure that we're all aware of the tragedy that took place in Georgia. And if you will indulge me, I'd like to read a statement of heartfelt sorrow. "On behalf of the entire Portsmouth family, we mourn the loss of the members of our extended family, the Robinsons, Nathan, Sarah, Stephen, Rebecca, and Alex, who all perished in a tragic car accident on Interstate 95 in Liberty County, Georgia, early Sunday morning. We're so deeply saddened by the news of the loss of this entire family. To the Robinson family and to their neighbors, please know that the entire city of Portsmouth is thinking of you and their heartache that you all must feel. We feel that heartache. We are grieving with you, and we're holding you close in our hearts. We share your sadness during this time of sorrow, and we lift you up in our prayers, and we wish you peace during what will be a long, long healing process. With you and your sorrow, as the city council Portsmouth, and I'm sure this is an expression of the entire Portsmouth family, let's take a moment of silence as we remember this family." Thank you. Dr. Patton. Do you have a meeting?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, I will turn it over to...
Dr. Bracy?
Dr. Bracy, who has the presentation.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you. And good evening, Mayor Rowe. I'm here, Lucas-Burt, members of city council, city manager, Dr. Patton. Tonight is my honor to bring forward my superintendent's estimate of needs for fiscal year 2020, 2021, for your consideration. As you are aware, this process is not done in silos. Tonight's presentation comes after lights of listening to our families, staff members, our board members. I want you to know that I value the input that we've received along the way as we develop our recommended 2021 budget. And I'm confident you will see the feedback of our community reflected in this presentation as we work to provide the best resources and support for the children of our city. As we begin, I want to turn to our CFO, Mr. Theo Falk, who will walk us through the first slides of our presentation outlining how we develop our budget.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to give you a breakdown of the budget and the funds that we have in our care on the school division side. The heart of the budget is in the center, which is the general fund budget, which shapes the balance between the revenues and expenditures involved in the day-to-day operation of our schools. As you can see, it's the largest part of this proposal at 76%. The next largest fund is our risk management fund, which represents about 10% of the annual overall budget. That is associated and accounts for all of our expenditures related to self-insurance, health insurance, our property casualty and liability premiums, as well as workers' comp claims. The grants funds next consist of federal, state, and local grant funding to be used for specific purposes. That fund represents 9% of our budget. For example, this fund includes our special education grant, which, as you know, provides additional resources for students with special needs. Next, at 4%, is our cafeteria fund. That's an enterprise fund, which means it's a separate account designed to accept fees for a particular service, in this case, food services. And then finally, at 1%, the textbook fund, which its name implies underwrites textbooks and materials for our school population, which is the smallest fund again at 1%. To give you a snapshot of all of our funds, all of those funds total in this budget $210.7 million. For the rest of the presentation, we'll address only the general fund as that is the fund that pays for the majority of our school division's operations. But I felt it important to show you the breakout for each one of these funds so you can see entirely the funds that we manage. A closer look at our operating budget. For FY 2021, our operating budget is, the estimate is $160.3 million. That is about $9.5 million more than our operating budget this year of $150.7 million. This proposal in this budget includes initiatives that were identified by the school board, our staff, and our community as priorities. Those priorities this year are an employee's salary increase, additional instructional positions to enhance student achievement, and a continued focus on student support and school climate and security enhancements. In addition, we've included funds to continue to enhance instructional technology programs as well as equipment. Later in the presentation, Dr. Bracy will walk through these specific additions that we made to this budget. These initiatives will allow us to address the priorities that were made very clear to us by our stakeholders. In short, we work very diligently to balance a conservative budget and need. However, there's a difference between a conservative budget and a stark one. So this proposal underscores the division's need to request additional funding from the city to accomplish this proposal. We will get to specifics of that recommendation in a few minutes, but let's take a look at our current funding situation. So if you look at the pyramid, as you'll note, the largest amount of our funding comes from state school funds, which is about 53% of the budget, at $84.2 million. Our average daily membership is projected to rise about to 13,177 students next year, which is an increase of 185 students over our FY 1920 ADM of 12,992. So keep in mind also that number does not include our preschool students. That is just the number of students that our state funding is based on. Our revenue outlook for FY 2021 is projected to increase by about $8.6 million. You will ask, why is that? That's for four reasons specifically. We got about a $4.5, $4.4 million increase in basic aid due primarily to re-benchmarking for FY 2021. If you recall from previous years, the first year of a biennial budget is a re-benchmarking year for the school budget. Re-benchmarking is where the state updates costs for SOQ, standards of quality, and direct aid programs. It also includes updates for updated salaries, prevailing costs, inflation, enrollment, and any other programmatic estimates that the VDOE puts into their calculation. There's usually new revenue in the first year of a biennial due to re-benchmarking. Also, there were increases in the amount of VRS revenue due to the increase in VRS rates that we all are experiencing by about 1% in FY 2021. Because they've increased the rate that we're paying, the state also increases the revenue that we receive in relation to that. That amounted to about a $1 million increase in revenue. The governor and his budget this year, and this budget is based on the governor's proposed budget at this time, he increased additional funds to support at-risk students and initiatives as well. The at-risk add-on revenue increased by about $2.4 million. But as normal with the state, when they give, they take away. They funded the increase for the at-risk add-on by using supplemental lottery revenues. So therefore, our supplemental lottery revenue decreased by about $459,000 to offset the increase that they put into at-risk. So as a result of all of that, we're projecting to realize a net $8,457,930 increase if the city funding was to remain flat and we were left with a $159.2 million budget as outlined in the current funding slide on this screen. However, our expenditures that are projected are $160.3 million. So even with that increased state revenue, much of that related to re-benchmarking, we still need additional revenue to fully fund the initiatives that we've presented in this budget. As the current proposal is not enough to cover all the initiatives, additional city funding of approximately $1.1 million would be needed to address the needs of the school division. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bracy, and he's going to share where we're investing our new funds.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. My first priority this year is employee compensation. I'm not alone in believing we need to be as competitive as possible offering staff salaries. Compensation was also the top priority from our budget survey participants in our conversations with school board members. As you know, the governor's proposed biennial budget for fiscal year 2022 includes a 3% raise for all SOQ-funded positions. However, similar to previous years, the state does not include funding for the raise until fiscal year 2021, 22. Therefore, there's no funding in fiscal year 2021 for the raise. That said, the importance of providing our employees with a salary increase cannot be underestimated. We must remain competitive in the marketplace with the teacher shortages being a nationwide problem. Providing a comprehensive wage for instructional staff is vital. For example, let's take a look at the salary, teacher salaries, as they make up the largest portion of our payroll. For 2018, which is the most recent data available, Portsmouth ranks third in the seven-city Hampton Roads region with an average salary of $53,725. Just to put that into context, we had the fifth highest salary in the prior year, so we've risen two spots. By the way, the state average for teachers is $57,261. In order to attract and retain the most qualified educators, we need to keep pace with our neighboring school divisions. As a result, I'm recommending a 2% increase for all staff members as part of the 2020-21 budget. Again, I want to reiterate, the governor's proposed budget requires school divisions and Commonwealth to provide a total 3% raise over two years of the 2020-2022 biennial. However, as mentioned earlier, the funding for this raise is not included in the governor's budget until fiscal year 2021, 22. PPS will receive credit for any raise given in fiscal year 2021, and that will be added to any raise given in fiscal year 21, 22. That total should equal at least 3% in order for PPS to accept the state's comprehension compensation supplement revenue. Please keep in mind that the funding from the state for that raise only includes standards of quality, which is known as SOQ positions, which are the minimum staffing standards for schools in Virginia. The total cost of a 2% raise is $2.3 million, and it is included in our budget estimate for fiscal year 2021. In addition to staff raises, this budget also includes approximately $1.4 million of initiatives that are designed to enhance our instructional programs, student support, school climate, and safety. In the next few slides, I will give you the background information on why these initiatives are necessary additions for the fiscal year 2021 budget. In the instructional category, we've added the following positions to support instructional excellence. The governor's proposed budget provided additional SOQ funding for school counselors. This will continue the state's multi-year initiative to reduce the staff ratios at all levels. To comply with the reduction in staffing ratios, we're required to add four high schools, two elementary counselors, a barbering teacher course at IC Norcom to continue to expand our career and technical education programs offered within our schools, a testing coordinator to help our Office of Research and Evaluation to continue to effectively manage and provide valuable information as it relates to assessment and accountability at the state and federal levels, three special ed program specialists to assist with the requirements for IEPs and other mandated services that we must provide to support our special education students. As our special education population is steadily increasing, these professionals will allow us to efficiently and effectively serve and meet the needs of our students. Continuing in the area of instruction, in the instructional area, the addition of three middle school music teachers. Currently, the high school music teachers serve both the high and middle schools in their zone. The addition of these teachers will allow the teachers at both levels to focus on the school and level at which they are assigned. A school-to-career transition lead for career and technical education would be responsible for planning, administration, and assessment of industry credentials at work-based programs. They would be responsible for developing, nurturing partnerships with businesses and communities as a whole. Churchland High School is the only high school that does not have a graduation coach. This will provide equity so that they can have the same resources as IC Norcom and Woodrow Wilson and will continue to support our efforts to improve the on-time graduation rate. In order to provide additional support at the early stages of development for our youngest students, we would like to add four PALS instructional assistants to our teachers to provide high-quality instruction within the classroom. In total, these additions will cost approximately $1.1 million. Student support services are critical to the success of our students and families. As such, we've included the following to address areas where we can provide additional assistance to our students and their families. Three attendance liaisons, since school attendance is now included in the criteria for state accreditation, these positions will assist in evaluating attendance and truancy patterns. We will assign these new attendance officers as a dedicated resource in our schools with the highest percentage of students with attendance issues. A central nurse position to provide support to our schools when nurses are absent or when there's a need for another resource to provide additional support to a building or buildings. Funding to support the equity adjustments for some of our nurses that was presented to the school board on the December 5, 2019 meeting. This will begin the multi-year effort to adjust the salaries of nurses to attain equity within their peers. These additions to student supports will cost approximately $233,443. As we all know, school climate and safety are vital to the operations of each school building. In light of this, we have made the following school climate safety addition as a priority in our budget at a total cost of $25,260. Continuing to focus on the advanced safety initiatives, we are proposing to add one school security officer at Churchland Middle School. This will bring the total number of school security officers at Churchland Middle to three, and that will be one for each floor of the school. Other budgetary additions in the budget total approximately $5.8 million. This is mainly as a result of the additional state funding through re-benchmarking and includes the following. Additional support of student hardware and software and classroom technology to ensure that our students and staff have access to current technology resources to enhance and making the learning environment more engaging. This includes replacement of Chromebooks for students, the purchase of additional laptop carts for classroom use, replacement of classroom projection systems, and other technology initiatives. Funds to refurbish and upgrade collections, equipment, and furniture in our laboratories, increases in the amounts allocated to keep up with the rising costs of providing services to our special education students who attend our regional CSEP program. Continuation of the support and expansion of dual enrollment, first college and early college programs in collaboration with Tyre Water Community College. Funding to support professional development so that staff members continue to be well-trained and familiar with the latest educational strategies to foster student success. Increases in the cost of software subscriptions for human resources software and programs that support the division's employee base. As we discussed the last time we were together, we were informed in late December that the city plans to discontinue providing fleet management services to the school division as of June 30, 2020. We are now in the process of setting up a meeting with the appropriate school and city staff to determine the next step. But funds were identified in this budget proposal for first-year calls for a new management service should there be a need to discontinue our current arrangement. As we continue to evaluate and ensure that our transportation routes are more efficient and effective, upgrades to our transportation routing software are necessary to accomplish this goal. Therefore, we've increased funding in that area. An increase for rising utility costs for schools and other facilities. Over the years, we have had to postpone or eliminate the replacement of operation and maintenance vehicles and equipment such as backhoes and loaders, trucks, and other heavy equipment. In addition, we also need to purchase new custodial equipment to replace items that are well past their useful lives. An increase in the general fund transfers to allow funds to cover increases in the risk management claims and expenditures. As stated, these additions total approximately $5.8 million. As you all know, school capital improvement projects in excess of $50,000 and with a useful life of 10 years or more are submitted to you for approval and inclusion in the city capital improvement plan, which is our CIP. As a result, we work closely with city staff to identify and manage projects that are approved. For the fiscal year 2019-20, we have a plan to submit the following projects for consideration of inclusion for the city's capital improvement plan. We've also included school bus fleet replacements in our CIP to ensure that our bus fleet can remain in compliance with state guidelines for buses utilized for student transportation. If you recall, 34 buses, school buses, that had achieved their useful life were approved by the school board to be auctioned in May of 2019. Therefore, to continue to remain on our current replacement cycle, we need to purchase additional buses. Upgrades are needed to replace HVAC system, the HVAC system at Churchland Middle School, continued work on the cooling tower and switchgear, which is an electrical mechanism at Woodrow Wilson High School. Playground equipment at many locations throughout the school district are in dire need of replacement. Therefore, this is the first year of a multi-year approach to replace playground equipment for the entire school district. Lighting is needed on softball and baseball fields at Churchland High. Currently, neither Churchland nor Norcom have field lights. We're working to light fields one school at a time to help the schools spring out police at their training to compete. As I conclude this presentation, I want to echo my comments to the board just two weeks ago. Let me again say that we here at Portsmouth Public Schools are committed to the success of every child who walks through our school doors. We want to see each student, every one of our 13,900 students cross the stage in June and have the same proud smiles of the graduates you see on the screen now. In order to achieve this, we have to be as strategic and forward-thinking with our funding as we are passionate for the success of our students. We know that the investment in education is the best investment anyone can make, taxpayers, lawmakers, board members alike. We will continue to share our story and make the case known for K-12 funding at our local, state, and national levels. I'm proud to be, I'm proud to be of the proposed budget brought before you tonight, and it is my belief it makes the most of every dollar we have today in order to bring the best of our, bring the best out of our classrooms now. Members of council, this concludes my superintendent's estimate of needs. My staff and I stand ready to receive any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Bracy, I have two questions, just because I don't know this terminology. What is a graduation coach and what is a PAOS instructional teacher?
A graduation coach works with the students at school, works with the counselors, in ensuring that students are on track for graduation. We have some students that require additional support that may not be able to meet the needs, or parents may not be able to get to the school. So the graduation coach serves as an additional liaison to go out and meet with the parents to make sure that they are aware of all the requirements that they need for graduation. They also work to make sure, along with the counselors, that they are on track with the courses that are selected and keeping them abreast, as well as the parents, of the needs that they have. The PALS, they work with our lower-level students, our anywhere from grade 10 to second grade, and they help those teachers that do the early assessments, those that may need additional support. They're there to provide that for those, for those teachers.
Thank you. Phil.
Dr. Bracy, what's the state mandate on school buses? Did I hear you correctly that we need to replace, what, 34?
34.
What is the state requirement?
We got, we got rid of 34 that was past the useful life.
Okay, so that 34 is already...
Yes.
Out of the fleet?
Yes, sir.
And doesn't the state provide some money for school buses?
They provide money for school buses, also for school, for school bus salary. So the money, the funds that come are allocated, it's not dedicated just solely. They give us an allotment that we, that we have a discretion to use.
Because the reason why I say that, I think in our CIP for the last few years, there was, what, a million dollars?
No, it wasn't. But 10, only 10 buses.
Right.
I don't think Dr. Bracy is saying 34, he's trying to replace 34 in one budget.
No.
He's saying he sold 34. I don't, his compliment is probably 100 something buses, or how many you have. But, but a program that stage replacement of his 34 that are now no longer in the system.
Right.
34 buses.
Yes, sir.
You said...
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Bracy, thank you for your presentation. One of the things in looking at the average classroom teacher salaries, when I'm looking at things, I like to sometimes look at the positives. And I think one of the things we can all celebrate is that we're not where we used to be as it relates to teacher salaries. Would we all agree?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's a good thing.
So, so when I'm looking at, I just want to understand, based on what, what you had shared, and Mr. Falk had shared about the budget revenue sources and what your needs are for this particular year. And, and you can certainly correct me if, if I'm not understanding this right. You said there was a need for about $1.1 million.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And then you, you had indicated that for the teacher raises, in order to keep up with what's going on in the region and keep qualified, and retain qualified teachers, you're requesting another $2.3 million.
I'm sorry?
Is, did I miss that wrong?
Only $1.1 million.
The only $1.1, okay. So, 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 right. Okay, so, okay, so, thank you. Thank you. So the $1.1 million is really what the additional request is?
Yes, sir.
That's the ask.
The ask, okay. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Patton. Well, Luca, we said that...
Yes, okay. I guess, Mr. Falk, starting with you first, since you did the budget revenue sources. You said that the preschool funding was not included in the state funds.
The preschool kids' number is not included, right. The number, the state funds school divisions based on K-12. So when your ADM is K-12, they don't fund the ADM or preschool within the K-12 allocations. We get money in grant funds for the, for the preschool children.
That was going to be my question.
Okay.
Why doesn't the state, the preschool kids are a part of Portsmouth Public Schools?
That is true.
They are numbers in, in a building.
Yes, ma'am.
But those numbers don't count in your 13,100...
Not in the ADM. So they fund K-12 ADM, kindergarten to grade 12. They do not include preschool children in the total number of students in your division.
Okay. So that was, that was my concern with that, because I was just wondering how, how they will be in funding and where the additional funding comes from, or is that the lack?
They, they give us funding through a grant called Virginia Preschool Initiative, and they give us a number of slots for those children, those preschool children that meet the qualifications. But that's not included in our regular, in our regular enrollment. That's a separate number that they give us, and they only give you a number of slots. So the number of slots you have are the number of students that you can serve.
Okay, so that's why the waiting list...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We have used, we've used some of our federal funds to add additional classes as well. Because if we only went with the slots that the state gave us, you know, we wouldn't have as many students in the program that we have now.
And I know there's a need there.
Right.
And then my last question is, are there any vacant positions that are funded in the instructional additions in your budget?
Not, not in the additions. We didn't, we didn't fund, we didn't put any vacant positions in the additions. All these additions are actual positions. All these additions are actual positions that we added.
Actual positions that are needed, right, right, okay. And I think it was one last one. Oh, the contract with the, the city, the fleet management. Our contract is not ending with them?
No, it's not.
Okay, so I thought that, Dr. Bracy?
Yes, you remember the last meeting we had?
Right.
The memo that was circulated?
Right.
That, that was shared with us, because if you remember, we, we did, I think what Dr. Patton shared with me is that someone from our department was actually looking at the possibility of outsourcing, going a different route, which is well within our right to do so. But that was taken to mean that we were going to do away with the services. And when that was presented to us, that's, that's what, that's how we took it. But, Dr. Patton and I talked, we're in the process of scheduling a meeting to sit down and talk about that, to see what that looks like for, for next year.
Well, we're on that subject. Isn't it more cost-effective to have a combined fleet management?
We do have a combined.
We do.
Combined.
That's what we did.
You all did that back in 15 or 14 or whenever.
There are some things within that that, that need to be worked out, so that when we, yeah, we, we, we're working on that.
Yes, the question in regard to the slots that the state issues to cities across the Commonwealth. And last year sometime, we were with some people from Northern Virginia and representatives, and they stated, "We don't use our slots, we turn them back over to the state." And so, our question, or what can we do, or how can we get our legislators or something to get those slots that the state will pay for, get them to cities where you've got the kids that can use that state money to be in the early childhood or whatever program? And the comments were, "Well, we never use all of ours, we just turn them back." And whatever we can do to try to, in years to come, through a legislative process or something, if Portsmouth has the population for this many kids that could be in the pre-K program, but the state is only giving this many slots, and you're having to use other money to try to make opportunities for kids, to me, that's an ask from the state through a legis, I don't know how, but something.
The, the state is, is actually revamping how they're doing preschool education. Actually, there's a webinar tomorrow to kind of go through their new platform, that's one of Governor Norther's platforms. One of the pieces of that is reallocation of slots that aren't used in other places to come to others. We'll probably find out some about that tomorrow, actually. There's a webinar about 11:30 to talk about that. But they're also, not only doing that, they're trying to consolidate all early education programs, meaning before five, under one umbrella. Right now, Head Start goes through, I believe, maybe Social Services, Health and Human Services, all of the VPI, the Virginia Preschool Initiative, the Department of Air. They have a proposal of putting all that under one umbrella, under the Virginia Department of Education, with one staff that manages it all, so that you can get the totality of the slots and then figure out how to manage them within the school division and in the localities within the state. So, they're working on that now. I don't know when it's going to come to pass, but they are working to do that.
That's good to know. Other questions?
One of the, one of the things that I'd like to point out, because on page six of his handout, when you look at nurses' equity adjustments, unless we do that, there's a possibility that we could lose some of our RNs. And we certainly do not want to lose any of our RNs in our schools. We try to keep, we try to hire RNs, but that is what that 66,277 is for. Now, the central nurse position, that's kind of a, goes back to those of you who remember Phyllis Bricker.
Yes.
She was the coordinator and she was, she was the supervisor over all of it, and she floated, when the nurse was out, Ms. Bricker was in. You know, that's kind of a position that we have, but I know this board has to address the salaries of the RNs, because when you hire an RN at a certain salary, then you've got an RN that has been with us for a number of years, and they're down here, and your RN is up here. That's just not, that's not sitting well. And so, we've got some RNs that have already informed us that unless we do this adjustment and bring it up to some kind of equity, they're going to leave and they can, they can go, they can go back to, I guess, Maryview or any hospital and make more money. But that is, that is a really, that's been one of my concerns a number of years, is to make sure, because, I mean, when you're dealing with medical issues in schools, especially with schools that have special ed and have to administer medication, you don't want your, your, your secretary administering medication, not that, and years when I was principal, we didn't have enough nurses, and we had to do that. And that's just, that's just not the way you, you want, you want, you want a certified nurse, a special ed RN. We have hired LPNs. We take what we can hire, but we've, we've got to, we've got to address this. This is really, this is one of my little key things, is making sure it's done. Thank you.
This is very comprehensive, and I really love your photographs. That's awesome. It really is. But this is very, very comprehensive. Prioritization, what does a school bus cost nowadays? Around numbers.
We could get 10 for a million dollars.
Right. We usually get 10 with the 1 million.
And round numbers, what does pre-K cost system-wide? In round numbers, do we have that?
Roughly about, I would say about 2.2, 2.3 million dollars. That's about the, the grant that we get from the state, roughly around there.
And how many classrooms do we have?
I can tell you the number of students. It's 500 and I believe 48 slots we have, if I'm not mistaken. Give or take a few. The state, the state actually gives us the number that we qualify for, as Dr. Patton said earlier. And so, we work to make that work. In addition to, as we said, we use some Title I funding and some other funding to increase some numbers in some classes. We pay for some classes outright with Title I funding, because it is approvable with Title I to use that for preschool funding.
And I'm on the, I just was appointed to be on the Dominion Power Advisory Committee, and we had our first, our first meeting. And to my knowledge, my surprise, I should say, they provided 10 electric school buses. Let's see, Norfolk got, Virginia Beach got four or five, and then Chesapeake got some, and then I think Hampton. And I, and I said, well, I raised my hand, did not know. I said, "What about us?" And they said, "Well, you didn't apply." So, I came back and I asked them, "Why didn't we, why didn't we apply?" And it's because that money wasn't appropriated. So, I was assured that the next round of electric buses, those that, the divisions that did not apply would have, they would have first, we would have first crack at it. So, I mean, if you're looking at saving energy, they're not, they're not cheap. They're 300, I think they were about $350,000 apiece, but over a long period of time, you're not, you're dealing with saving energy.
Right.
So, I hope that the next go-around, that Portsmouth, we could get at least one. I know Hampton got one.
My comment was, is the state kind of saying that in so many years, that you're going to move to electric school buses? I mean, I'm just thinking about looking down the road to the future.
And to give you background on Dominion Power project, they would pay the difference between what a regular bus would cost and what the electric bus would cost. But here's what you have to do. When you're not using that bus, you have to plug it up and charge it and give it a charge. So, they'll put charging stations at our facility. You have to plug that bus up and charge it, so they get the energy back. And that's how they pay for the program. I don't know how that works in operation, if you have to obviously take a bus out that you normally wouldn't at that time of day, but that's how they're paying for it. You charge it, they draw the energy off that bus, and they use that on their grid.
Got it.
So, the funds, you said that they, that it was not allocated in your budget, or wasn't allocated?
It wasn't in the CIP this year for buses.
Okay.
So, you have to purchase the base bus, and they do the upgrades to making an electric bus.
Oh.
Yeah, so you have to purchase the base bus. So, you have, the 100,000, you have to put up front, and then they do the rest for that. But if you don't have the funding for the bus, they really don't talk to you. That's why we weren't included in this first round.
Okay. What's that program called again? The Virginia Power?
It's the Dominion Virginia Power Electric Bus Initiative, I believe.
Yep, that's what it is.
And we want, we want to submit the next go-around. We've already talked to our folks in transportation, so we're, we're waiting, so we hope that we can get the funds, so we can do that.
Any other questions?
Yes.
We have anything else to discuss? Thank you so much. Thank you for, thank you for this very comprehensive, understandable report. You're welcome to stay. We'll take a three-minute break. We'll take a three-minute break to allow everybody to hear. Now, we're back in order. Dr. Pat?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, the first presentation, talent acquisition and retention. Across the region, municipalities are adapting their recruitment and retention strategies to attract and retain qualified candidates. This evening, Ms. Elizabeth Gooden, Director of Human Resource Management, is returning to present information requested for talent acquisition and retention discussions from the retreat, and the impact of Portsmouth changing environment and strategies for talent acquisition and retention. The second will be capital improvement projects. During the City Council retreat, Mr. James Wright, the city's chief engineer, made a detailed presentation on the city's buildings and facilities. Two areas of focus, in particular, the sports flex and city park, are before you this evening at your request for the next immediate steps staff will take. Mr. Wright will share staff actions from the retreat in a scheduled through early spring. The third is the FY 2020 financial status report. Mrs. Patty Phillips, interim CFO, will present the fiscal year 2020, year-to-date general fund, actual revenues, and expenditures through January 31, 2020. As you will note in the presentation, the general fund revenues are tracking comparable to prior years, with total revenues of 107.0 million. Expenditures at, to date, and expenditures at 144.3 million are also tracking well compared to the prior years. And the last one will be a short presentation, FY 2020 budget, budget drivers. As previously discussed in the City Council retreat, developing the city's annual budget requires the ability to balance a variety of mandates. At the retreat, I identified three major factors that are affecting the city. The FY 2021 budget drivers presentation will be given this evening by Mr. Trey Burke, Budget Officer, and he will review the broad trends. Mrs. Good?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. My brief presentation is a report back from our City Council retreat. There was broad discussion at the retreat on employee compensation, and information on this slide represents a snapshot of the approximate compensation costs to increase the entry-level salaries of our sworn public safety employees, to include moving tenured employees down the salary range. That's going to be approximately about $3 million. These costs associated with sworn employees would bring our entry-level recruits to an entry-level salary of about 42,500. And those individuals, once they graduate from the academy, it's based on giving them an entry-level salary of $45,000. We would also make appropriate adjustments to the corresponding rank positions. And also, please note that this figure, that's 3 million, includes both sworn fire and police because we have parity in our fire and police department. With respect to general employees and City Council's desire to have an entry-level salary of our general salary schedule starting at about $30,000, and to include the salary movement of existing general employees, it's going to cost us approximately $4.8 million. In situations where an organization's costs may exceed what they have budgeted, there have been situations where we could use some type of phased-in approach to also achieve the same goals. We could be something, we could do maybe over a three-year period or whatever we thought was reasonable. Likewise, if the city was entertaining a general wage increase, it would cost us approximately 1.8 million dollars.
General wage increase of what magnitude percentage-wise?
3%, sir.
3%?
Yes, sir. The future of public sector compensation is leaning towards a performance-based strategy. For example, an organization could budget an average of, let's say, a 3% increase, and based on performance, employees could receive an increase anywhere from 0 to 4% as long as they didn't exceed their average amount. For fiscal year 2021, we are introducing our new performance coaching system, which is an automated system, and it will include both an employee's self-evaluation and a supervisor's evaluation. From a managerial perspective, I tell everyone, it's always good when you're doing a performance evaluation, have your employees evaluate themselves, see where they believe that they are, and listen to where they think their accomplishments are, and you can also get some feedback in that regards. The initial year provides both employees and management with an opportunity to have meaningful compensations, with looking at fiscal year 2022 to actually implement a performance-based system. And what we would do that, one thing you never want to do when you implement a new system, you want to have some corresponding training. So, we'd be making sure that both employees understand what's expected them to meet performance standards and also managers in that regards. And these are just some examples of some of the workforce development trainings that we've actually used in the city, and that have also been, we received some really good positive feedback. That concludes my presentation for tonight. Now, answer any questions.
Any questions?
I would like to comment from what Mrs. Good said. In 2016, when we were starting to look at the employees who were below the 25,000, some of them the teams, we started in that '17 budget, and every year, we continued to work toward getting those individuals, which was probably about, how many?
I want to say maybe 150, 760.
It was more than that when we started.
Oh, when we first started? It was about 200.
About 200 to 250. And then now, everybody is where they're supposed to be.
Everybody's where they're supposed to be, and we don't hire anyone lower than the 30,000 dollars.
We don't have anyone in the whole city that's lower, because you remember, we had 10 left, and we took care of that 10.
Yeah, back to the, the compensation snapshot, you said that the general wage increase 1.8 million to get to that level, and you said that that would be based on a tax increase?
No, no, I didn't, no, no.
Okay, no. What, what 3% of what?
I said, the 1.8 million would account for a 3% general wage, 3% increase.
Okay. I heard 3%.
No. This is just proposed.
I'm sorry. I was just wondering what a 3% was.
No. It was just, it was just out there, proposed, nothing.
Yeah, no, no tax dollars. I mean, no, none of that talk there.
Right.
That's right.
One question. We've got one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you can, question, you know, discussing, you know, going forward, which we don't know where we are yet, but on the public safety adjustment. Going forward with that, no matter how you do it, is there possibly some way, if you had a committee and involved some of the police officers and firefighters on that committee? And the only reason I bring that up is because I believe the last time any adjustments were done, was it 2018? I don't remember what year it was. But when they did it, you know, it was kind of a mystery for the employees, the way it was going to shake out when it happened.
Sure.
So, I think it would be good to have some representation of the two bodies, you know, working with your office, to have input and know how it's going, and that way it has buy-in, and people can know what to expect.
And transparency, yeah. And there's no problem with that. If you remember back in, the last time I was here, and we actually did something with compensation, we actually had a, we actually had a committee that was representative of, I'm sorry?
2006.
Yeah, 2006, we actually had a committee that had some representations from fire and police and some general employees.
Okay, great, thank you.
Always like input.
How do we get to performance?
How do we get to performance management?
Yes, ma'am.
Just looking at some of the trends that are going on as far as in some of the other cities, all?
That's something you came up with.
It's not something that I came up solely by myself, just in talking in the budget, along with the budget team. And it's also a good way to reward employees as they meet performance standards. What you kind of see going away a little bit is giving everybody the same increase. It allows for some incentives and some other, some goal attainment.
You know, did you ever discuss how easy that is to manipulate?
I will say this, any system, if you, I got you, but hear me out. Any system, if you, I got you, but hear me out, being manipulated, but I think what we're talking about, I can tell you from prior experience in a prior locality, when we did our performance-based increases, we had input. So it's basically looking at the different ratings you get from the different departments. It's sitting down with representatives, and so you do have some input in that regards. But I will tell you, employees do find it to be very rewarding.
Then the employee gets to evaluate him or herself in the process.
It's a good part.
So it's not just you evaluating me. I get to evaluate myself, and then that supervises. Whereas now in our system, you don't have that subjective.
And in some organizations, which you can actually look for, for example, I worked for another organization, and when we got down to public safety, we actually kind of divided them up between patrol and the different areas to make sure that everything was equitable because what you want to make sure you do, that it is fair and just for all. So it's not just one person. For example, in this locality I worked before, it wasn't just me sitting down. I had other people sitting down at the table and looking and making sure, even in a situation where there were some concerns, that maybe we need to look at doing some other differences.
Been there, done that, and that's an easy-to-manipulate system, and it causes a lot of confusion and dissension in your ranks. How did he get 3%? I was better than him, and I got 1%. Maybe there's another way.
Well, I was interested in different options. I think as long as you're transparent and you have good conversation with everyone, and make sure you have some understandings, I think it tends to work well. I think it's just people understanding, what do you mean by performance? And that's why I spoke to the trainings. Even in some of the trainings we've done with employees, we explained some of the different things that you also do, and you also work with managers because what you also do, you're looking at the different ratings, you're making sure that there is some equity in that regards.
And I truly understand the thoughts that you've derived, that it's a good system, and at the onset and the building of it, and talking about it, and on paper, it is, but the implementation becomes quite a, quite a problem for you.
Well, if I, if I share this, organization a little, well, quite a bit larger than this, there's also some different things you do when you do a performance evaluation. For the most part, employees want to be heard, and what we had in our old system, we actually had an appeal process, so you had the opportunity. So let's say your manager evaluated, did your performance evaluation, and you had some concerns. We actually went back, we looked at that, and let me say this to you, we did have some situations where we needed to make some adjustments. I think as long as you give people an opportunity to be heard, and they understand, and when you need to make an adjustment, you make an adjustment.
Did you ever think of that being a distraction from policing with the amount of time might be spent on it?
Policing in what?
Or, say, for instance, if you've got that in the police department, do you think that it might be a distraction from policing, from concentrating on what their job is to worry about the performances and how they're going to be rated, and is he going to rate me this, and did he do it right, and that sort of?
I'll say this, where I worked before, we didn't have those challenges, sir. As I said, we sat down, we had some transparency, and when there was some instances in some regards that, you know, department head had a concern, we sat down and we addressed that. The goal was to make sure that the system was fair and equitable.
Thanks.
Yeah, one thing, you know, talking about this, which the city has had employee evaluations as long as I've worked here. And like now, the individuals that work for me in my current job with State, we do employee evaluations every year. And the problem with the evaluations that we have now is that evaluation, when I evaluate the individuals assigned to me, it can do nothing positive for them. But that evaluation can do something negative to them. So this way, you know, there is something, a positive outcome, and I know there was discussion for years about multiple career paths because you have individuals that don't necessarily want to be promoted, and not everybody can be because there's limited positions. So there's alternate career paths, which this could help increase compensation for officers that maybe don't want to get promoted. And I think there's some good benefits to it, and, you know, how that looks, I can't answer that at this point, but I think there's some, some great advantages to it to our employees.
Good. Dr. Pat?
And Mayor, and Members of Council, we are not looking to implement anything in the 2021. 2021 would be a year of which human resources, working with the team of employees on this model, how it works, what it entails, and consideration of implementing it in the 2022 budget. So it does, nothing will change in this budget. We are looking in 2021 to start the conversation across the department.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Wright, come forward with capital improvement, looking at the sportsplex and city park.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. Going to have a brief update for you, follow up to the retreat, and to talk to you about some of the things staff has done to move forward, some of the initiatives that you asked us to pursue at your retreat. So at the retreat, we looked at several municipal facilities and decided to focus on recreation. With two of the main things to look at was the master plan for the sportsplex and the master plan for city park. Moving forward, recently, staff has looked through our list of annual services consultants and identified a small core group that we think that can provide those services. We've met with them, discussed what we need to get from them as far as the master plan. You see some of the things that we're looking to include in that master plan. Heavy, heavy on public communication, looking at your existing facilities, proposed facilities, how they interact with each other, looking at accessibility, looking at amenities for all ages, programming, stormwater management, landscaping, signage, transportation, and parking, and just to name a few things to be looking at. We met with them last week. So moving forward, tentative schedule, they're going to submit basically their shortlist of qualifications here by the 20th of March. We'll have interviews, second week of April. We'll have selection of consultants for, it'll either be one consultant or two consultants based on what the committee decides based on those interviews. And we'll have our initial public engagement for both master plans by mid-May. And that's where we are at this point moving forward.
That's quick.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. The, at the retreat, I've mentioned the recreation study. Has everybody been copied on that?
The book from 2012? Okay, it has been cut. I will get it. It's, I have one document. Does anyone, I don't, does anyone have it electronically? It was done in 2012.
I think there is electronic.
Okay, we will get you an electronic. We'll send it to you tomorrow. You have it, you have it electronic?
I think I know where one is.
Oh, did she get it? Oh, well, it was sent.
Where was it sent? It was put in your box if you sent it.
Yeah, it was at the retreat. It was emailed back to us.
Check your box. She said it's in there that Monday.
Oh, I have a copy, but not electronically. I got to you.
No. She said it's in your box.
I think it's in the box now.
Yes. She put it in Monday after.
Should be the box.
The box, yeah.
The box.
If not, let me know, and I will get it in the box. It's in there.
They probably wouldn't fit in otherwise.
It's in there.
I'm pretty sure I saw it today.
All right.
All right.
Questions of James, any further?
Thanks, Mr. All right, we will have Mrs. Patty Phillips to come up and make the FY 2020 financial status report.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke. My name is Patricia Phillips. As the manager said, I'm your interim CFO for at least a few more weeks. I'm here today to give you a brief overview of the city's major funds with a focus on the general fund. This is through January 31st, 2020, and I thought it'd be helpful to you to kind of see where we are at this point in time. All right. Everything is tracking well and consistent with prior years. In fact, it's, I think it's probably tracking consistently with other local governments for this time of year. Revenues are 107 million, expenditures are 144.3 million. Revenues are not received evenly, expenditures generally are almost a straight line through the year. So you'll see that kind of a pattern. So it does highlight the importance of having a good fund balance so you have working capital to pay the bills. We still have five years, five months to go in fiscal 2020, and at that time, more analysis will be done, accruals for revenues and expenditures that happen in July and August that apply back to 20, and all that will be made at that time to get the final accounting. Just, just as another snapshot, on the revenue side, we have a budget of 245.3 million, actual revenues 107, so we're about 44% in January. And expenditures, 250.2 million budget and 144.3 spent, 58% has been spent. And just to kind of highlight some of the major revenue, revenues, of course, it's mostly local, and we'll talk more about that. And on the expenditures, just want to highlight debt service, schools, and other transfers are a significant portion of your budget as you've no doubt been talked about before. A little bit more on the revenue side compared to the other years, and I won't read all of it to you, but I want to point out your major revenues are real property, personal property, other local taxes, and of course, some state aid. Those are major. And as we said earlier, we're at 44% compared to 40% this time last year and 44% the year before. So we're right in line, no alarm flags going off. General fund expenditure comparison, same thing. We've spent 144 out of a budget of 250.2 million. Just wanted to highlight a few things. Public safety, 62.3 million. And, let's see, transfer to public schools, 55.4, debt service, 37. So a good portion of your expenditures. We spent 58% of the budget last year, it was 59% the year before, that was 50. Again, pretty much in line. This is just a little snapshot, public utility revenues and expenses, budget versus year-to-date actual. Revenues have come in, a large portion of the budget, 49%, expenditures, 47. Parking authority, a little bit more revenues than expenses have come in. Golf, a little, less revenues than expenses. Waste management, less revenues and expenses, and stormwater, more revenues than expenses so far. That is a very, very high-level overview, so if there's anything I can clarify, I'd be happy to do that.
Any questions?
So we're five months into the end of the budget year.
Yes, ma'am.
And looking at the year-to-date at 50 and 58 and 59%. So we're close on target, I mean, with meeting the budget.
Yes, ma'am. And what makes it complicated for local government is we will accrue more expenses and revenues in July and August back to this year. So, but comparing to the, where we are with the other years, I think we're right in line.
That's right.
Is our accrual period 45 days?
Usually. There are some exceptions to that, of course, and with the accrual of expenses, if, before the audit is done, if you get a bill that applies back to 20 and it's material, you're going to accrue it back.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips.
Any further questions? Thank you so much.
All right, you will have Mr. Trey Burke to come up and speak with us about budget drivers in the FY 2021 budget. And Members of Council, this is Mr. Burke's first presentation to City Council.
Yeah.
He's been on.
Think up some good questions.
I told him, don't be nervous, you'll do well.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and Members of City Council. Tonight, I will be presenting a preliminary review of budget drivers. The city manager must provide to council a balanced budget where revenues are equal to expenditures. Therefore, there is a, budget has a limited amount of funding to achieve a large number of federal, state, and local mandates, along with competing service needs for all citizens of Portsmouth. This brief presentation will review some of the fiscal impacts which are associated with the mandates imposed upon the city, as well as limited discretion to address all of these mandates. In Dr. Patton's city council retreat presentation, she reviewed the following factors. Financial pressures. As discussed in the five-year forecast, tax revenue growth projected at 0.7% is well below expenditure growth projected at 1.5%. There have been reductions in state and federal funding coupled with new mandates, all of which are unfunded. Non-discretionary expenditures continue to grow, along with growth to deferred maintenance liabilities. Competing service needs. The city must respond to a variety of legal, moral, and popular mandates, including public safety, education, municipal building maintenance, recreation and cultural activities, public utilities, and infrastructure. Workforce. The HR director has already presented on this. In brief, competitive salaries are necessary to retain and attract employees. The city needs to have an appropriately-sized staff in order to meet the needs of its citizens. This chart outlines some of the larger projected changes to the budget. It is not all-inclusive and may change as we continue to budget the FY 2021 budget.
Can we stop and make sure that we don't have any questions as we go?
I was going to go through a lot of them.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Please continue.
All right. Virginia retirement and health insurance benefits will increase by roughly $2.4 million. The Portsmouth public schools transfer, per the school funding formula projections, may increase by $590,000. Regional jail per diems will increase by roughly $550,000. And the general assembly's voting, early voting mandate remains unfunded and is projected to cost $440,000, and this is assuming that they does not adopt any potential expansions of the mandate, which could increase the associated costs. For revenue...
I'm going to speak. We have been meeting with Mrs.
Short?
Short. And this amount, we know is going to change based on some givens from the state and federal as it pertains to election. Right now, it appears...
Way up, change up or down.
Well, go up more, we have spent more. They may extend it to eight o'clock. Right now, polls close at seven. We are ordering in this budget, Mr. Jones has ordered some...
Laptops.
New laptops, new, all the things that have to be updated for the upcoming 2020 election. So.
And sir, did I, did I hear you correctly, or did you state, is this an unfunded mandate?
Currently, yes, sir. There is no increased revenue being promised.
This is new requirements for her.
For revenue declines, the bridge loan revenue from the state will not be received in FY 2021. This is a loss of $1.7 million. Keep in mind that personal property revenues have not, have not recovered as was promised by the Port of Virginia, and that the city will repay the bridge loans starting in the next fiscal year. The Portsmouth parking authority has a shortfall of $340,000 for which the city manager and her staff are reviewing potential, excuse me, are reviewing potential revenue and expenditure options. The city's share of 599 funding, which benefits law enforcement, is down by $230,000.
What is the gap on, there has been a chunk of personal property that's come online. New. What is that value? And where I'm going with this is that if, yeah, this is an unintended consequence, and that's how we got this before, of the extended loan. General Assembly closes on March 9th. General Assembly closes on March 9th. We always have a chance through the budget conferees, and so let's, let's figure out what that loss is for the next fiscal year. If we have agreement, we'll work to try to get, yes, get the bridge loan amended. Yes, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I did start some of this discussion with council who is handling the litigation with regard to the port. And I want to say the payback amount is not significant, but I do agree with the principle that this, this did not follow the expected path in terms of this scenario.
To bring everybody up to date, when the state extended the lease on VIG, a huge chunk of personal property, which was the private sector, transferred ownership to the public sector, to the Port Authority, was taxable under the private sector, becomes non-taxable. So we, we lost a chunk of revenue, 1.7 million over three-year period. Port said, they'll come back online three years out, once we get this 320.5 million-dollar project done. And so it was on that basis, when we met with the governor, the governor said, clearly this is an unintended consequence of the lease, we need to make sure that Portsmouth is whole, that this cost them not a dime. That's why this is an interest-free loan, and so we need to know what that number is, and we'll go back and shame them.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Question, Burke. The 599 state law enforcement grant, did that take into consideration the budget amendment that was put in place where there was additional funding added to localities for 599 funding?
We have a particular gentleman in budget, and I can check with him and get back.
We need to look at that.
Sir, is it?
Yeah. The deal they're dealing with right now.
It's a big, big...
So that could impact...
This slide illustrates that the city has a variety of mandates and needs. If one were to exclude mandated services, only 25% of our annual budget, roughly $60.6 million, would remain to provide any service that isn't mandated. And even this number doesn't include management, legal, and maintenance services provided in support of mandated programs.
There was a piece I must to say here. Could you go back to that, please?
Okay.
Something I wanted to share with your council, so you will know how much we are contributing toward education in our city. And when you look at the proportion that is discretionary for public education in our city, the local share for FY 2020 is approximately $23.8 million, which is 43%. This is non-discretionary, and the City Council provides approximately $31.6 million over the required amount of local share, which is 57%. This is discretionary. Okay?
Okay.
Oh, this is mine, excuse me. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, you may recall, as a part of the FY 2021 budget polling instrument, we asked the citizens as to whether or not they would support a real estate tax increase. Based on the results, approximately 32% of those polls indicated that they would support some form of a tax increase. And this frame just shows you what the potential increase of one cent, or two cent, or even three cent would bring in. At our penny on the tax rate right now is up $22,000 from last year's budget, which is $770,000. This is just a snapshot for you to see, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That completes our work...
Before we want to close, I want to remind members of the...
We have a fifth item? Do we have a fifth, we have a closed session?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Allow me to finish. This completes our work session agenda, and then do you have something?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to remind members of council and the public that tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. in this room, the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission will have its regular or monthly meeting. However, at this particular meeting, as I told you all a few weeks ago, representatives from the Regional Navy Command will be here to talk about excess property at the naval shipyard area going over into Scott Street Annex, and I think it would be...
8 o'clock.
Really great if any of all of you could attend. It's a public meeting, so, and that's at 8 o'clock in this room.
If we end up with more than three...
It's a public meeting anyway.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter.
You got to sit in the corner.
You got to sit in the corner.
Yeah, sit in the corner.
And you can't talk.
Yeah.
Yeah, no talking.
All right, thanks. 8 o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Did Admiral Ship...
I don't think Admiral Rock is coming, but his next in command is coming, for sure.
Remember, we have a occasion for a stand-up conversation with him, the issue is Wilber and the steam plant.
And...
Okay. We do have a need to go into closed session. Is there a motion?
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Subsection 2.2-3711, 8.7, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect negotiating or litigating posture of the city specifically regarding Michael A. Moore versus City of Portsmouth, Portsmouth Circuit Court case numbers 19003403, 19003277, and 19004481.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Here and now, we're ready for the question. Now, first, will you call this roll call, though, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simms?